Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We have the minutes of the June tenth and the July first. Let's take June tenth first, abatement hearing.
Move through accept the minutes of the June ten abatement hearing.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two to three to zero in favor, July first.
Move to approve July first minutes.
Second.
Moving seconded, any question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor. Finance. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sixty in the sum of thirty eight thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars and twelve cents. Uh, two big ticket items in this is the uh monthly recovery coaching to Michael's hospital for just over eleven thousand dollars. And uh radio communications um um sheriff's office vehicle repairs for just over six thousand.
Good cause their motion please.
Move to approve warrant number sixty three for thirty eight thousand nine eighty five twelve.
Seconded.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor. The uh. Number fourteen payroll.
Payroll warrant number fourteen in the sum of three hundred fourteen thousand three hundred eighty six dollars and forty seven cents. Uh, this particular payroll includes our health and Lou payments which happens quarterly. Uh, six thousand dollars worth of stipends and some grant service work that will be drawn down from other funding sources. We are, as you look over to the right hand side, over on the overtime allocations uh based on a one twelfth allocation. Not super concerned because if you look at the figure above that, you'll see that that is what we are underspent when you look at our salaries agency wide so. We're we're still sitting pretty for middle of the year.
Could we have a motion please?
Move to accept payroll warrant uh twenty twenty five fourteen in the amount of three hundred fourteen thousand three hundred eighty six dollars and forty seven cents.
Seconded.
Move you seconded, are there any comments? Melissa said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
And I passed out the budget calendar draft, um did you guys want to take? That do you want a table of vote on this until the next meeting, so you have the ability to look at it and compare to your calendars? What is not included on this budget calendar will be commissioner workshops. I would like to gather all of the information for budget, put together a preliminary budget for Carrie and I to review. And at that point, we will present it to the commissioners at which time we'll work to have our department heads come in as necessary for questioning.
That'll be a separate.
That is a full separate workshop work session that we've done in the past.
And you traditionally don't put it on your calendar for like you just.
No, because it's pretty fluid, it's it's when we can make it happen, sometimes it's after a meeting, sometimes it happens on the following Wednesday.
We have a problem at that point, we can adjust it.
Did you want to accept the calendar or table it till the next meeting?
That's right, that's what this is the main thing is to accept the calendar.
Correct.
I'll move to accept.
I second it. Um, and I'll also note that uh Friday, October seventeen, I will not be here, so. Um, that's the only conflict I have, but it sounds like it's not too much of a conflict.
I will ensure you know the budget before you go.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh all in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
More of those rather than why than this this time of days, still catching.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen, how are you doing today?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It looks like our jail count this morning out of two bridges is one seventy two. You can see a breakdown there, we have twenty five, SAG has twenty six, twenty four from Knox, fifty five for Penob Scott. Twenty from Waldo, three uh federal inmates from the marshal service generally and nineteen from ICE. This morning. You don't have any questions about that, I would make a recommendation that we renew our contract with main drug enforcement. This is for Detective Sergeant Peach, I just need your authorization. Uh, to sign the contract which would be good through June thirtieth of twenty twenty six, this is uh, this is a contract that covers. Uh, complete reimbursement for Jason's time with MDEA in the amount of one hundred eighty five thousand three hundred ninety one dollars and ninety six cents.
So does he coordinate the activity in this county for them or what?
Sure, yeah, he Jason is the uh mid coast supervisor for MDEA, so he supervises uh the whole mid coast region.
Like to pay him and house him as an officer here.
In our budget, he's in our detective line, uh has been um and uh so all of his time. For MDEA is a hundred percent reimbursed. The only time that's not reimbursed is like uh if he works for us, which he does occasionally, he's going to do some mandatory training, goes to the range. Things like that, um we we cover it in our budget, but uh the rest is all, including any overtime that he gets with main drug is all covered by the state, we pay it. Here and we bill, we we bill main drug.
You've been doing it for quite a few years now.
Yeah, yes, a a number of years, in fact, he's probably. Boy, I'd have to look, I bet it's been ten or fifteen years now, yeah.
His brother was the supervisor before that.
Brother was the supervisor before that, right, yeah.
Yeah, I assume the need is pretty vast in, you know.
Yeah, and if you're you're not familiar with main drug, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but you know, they they it's a state agency, right, state funded agency through Department of Public Safety. Um, and it's really the majority of the agency is made up of officers who are on loan, just like. From from local uh uh departments like the sheriff's office, municipal department, state police. Um, all contributive officers and it's all reimbursed through through main drug, it's the way, it's the model that has been in place in Maine for a number of years, it's worked pretty well.
That's what you said, from off.
I'm sorry, it's one hundred eighty, one eighty five, three ninety one, ninety six. His contract, yeah. I just, this is one that has my name on it, I just need your authorization to sign.
Move to authorize the MDA contract in the amount of one eighty five, three ninety one and ninety six, is that the total?
Is it second? Yes, there is a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
Thank you. Uh, the next item I have, it's just a request to apply for uh continued funding for uh underage drinking. Uh, enforcement around the county, uh we apply every year. Uh, for a grant uh that's that's uh funded through the state but managed through Dirigo safety. Uh, over in Lewiston, it's in the amount of uh six thousand dollars. Um. I just need your authorization to apply for that grant, what this allows us to do. Um, is do compliance checks, uh you know what I mean, um. With uh both uh on premise and off premise retail alcohol sales locations around the county, so to make sure that people are adequately identifying. Checking IDs, you know, not serving uh essentially underage underage folks um alcohol.
What would be off premises, if you said on premise and off premise?
So you'll mom and pop store?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, Big Apple.
Okay, versus like a bar versus a grocery store.
Carryout, Hannaford, any place that sells alcohol.
Right.
Um, versus a restaurant where you can sit down at the bar and have a restaurant, uh you know, lounge, that kind of thing.
So mostly the grant is going just for that, those purposes.
All that, that's all we do is is compliance checks uh around the county, we offer training.
Mm hmm.
Um, as well, we do a couple of training classes a year, service seller training. Um, Chief Maker, uh. Scott Solerzano, and I think Mark Bridham, Deputy Mark Bridham, who still works for us part time, uh are instructors and they and we offer these classes to any. Businesses and their employees here in the county. Um, you know, a couple of times a year, we do and we do uh and we and we go and do actually onsite. Um, checks and then um, yeah.
Okay.
Any violations or administrative violations, they get turned over to the state.
Move to um give the sheriff authority to apply for the grant.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any comment? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
Thank you. Uh, the next item I have is a budgeted uh request. Um, to fund our. Uh, three of our, we have subscription services for our body cams and our in car cams, right? Um, and uh that's this, it's a five year subscription, right, it's twenty seven hundred dollars a year. Per unit, which is covers two cameras, this covers the maintenance and and upgrades and stuff on the on the equipment itself, plus our cloud storage. Uh, for storing data, um uh using the Motorola cloud. Um, yeah, it's a budgeted amount and uh the total is ten thousand seven hundred and four dollars.
Move to authorize the payment of the Motorola Solutions at ten thousand seven oh four.
Second.
Any comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Thank you. While you're signing that, I'll I'll move along here in interest of time, uh if that's okay?
Mm hmm.
Um, yeah, so the next item I have is really a a request uh for your consideration. Uh, certainly my recommendation to approve a change in in employment status for our ACOs. Our full time ACO, Alan Oliver, is interested in stepping back to part time. Our part time ACO. Our part time ACO, Lindsay, is uh interested in stepping up to full time. Um so we have to follow some process probably in house. I don't know if it has to be posted, how that works. We will certainly follow any policy. Uh that we need to do in house to make sure that that uh that that's posted for anybody who might be qualified. Um I don't have anybody, I'll be honest with you. I don't have anybody beating my door down. I wish I did. Um it's a, it's a, it's a challenging job. Um one, as you know, we do under contract for a number of towns. Um so, uh this is a, this works for everybody. Um if it's uh, uh but to 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 make that. Final, once we dotted all our i's to follow policy, we need your approval to make sure that that happens and changes uh. Changes their employment status with the.
Sheriff, just to confirm, ACO Animal Control.
Yes, I'm sorry, Animal Control Officer, yes.
Move to approve the change of employment status authorization for full time to part time, part time to full time.
Second.
Move them seconded? Any question, other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
And and just for the minutes, that'll probably happen right around the the first of August. Um, you know, to coincide with the payroll, you know what I mean, to make it smooth that way. Um and the last item I have is uh. Uh kind of last minute, um so I feel like I'm uh at begging for forgiveness rather than asking for permission. Um, the Department of Public Safety put out uh several months ago, uh uh uh. Uh public safety, health and wellness, uh. Not gonna, it's written on the agenda there.
Pilot program?
Yeah, uh. Reimbursement Pilot Program, right? This is specific, this is a specific program. Um that's geared towards public safety people. To provide grants for government entities for the purpose of providing public safety employees with wellness visits or specialized cardiac and meta metabolic screenings. That specifically address the physical or mental effects experienced by public safety employees, any public safety employee, EMS, fire, police, right? Um and they're specific to those cardiac and metabolic. Um risk assessments, right? Um so uh. Chief Jason Warlock uh had had reached out to us. We're all looking at it individually. Um like many counties, we decided to apply for this grant jointly. Chief Warlock and Demos Scott PD took the lead on it. They made the application in Demoscada. Um, fast forward, Chief Warlock has just recently resigned to take a new position with Sagat Hawk County. Congratulations to him. Uh wishing the best in his new position, uh but it kind of left the grant in limbo. They were just about ready to issue the grant in his name. I'm the only other police chief that uh in the county or, you know, uh. That said, hey, yeah, I want some of my staff to do this, uh and because we we had to. We had to submit names and all that stuff and who would be interested in which type of task and those kind of things ahead of time. This was done with fire and EMS as well around the county, uh for anyone that was interested. Um the grant was issued in the amount of fifty one thousand. What was it, Gary? Fifty one?
Fifty one, seven, twenty nine, thirty five.
Thank you.
Issue to the town of.
Issues with the town of Demoscada. The town is asking me if I would sign. And accept the grant. We're now asking the county if we would accept the grant because the chief was going to administer it. He's leaving. It's they're kind of in limbo. They don't have anybody to do it. Um so this is kind of a a last minute. It's been awarded. They're asking for us to uh to take over the administration of the grant. I haven't, I have, I talked to Carrie. I just found this out yesterday. Um, well, I I knew that the grant was out there. I just found out that it had been awarded and that. And that uh they were asking us to do it.
These other though town agencies are also included or.
Yeah, every, ev- everyone's included and I and what we did, Commissioner, uh what Chief Warlock did, uh is he reached out to every. Uh he reached out to the County Fire Chiefs Association, the EMS folks and law enforcement around the county and said, this is available. But I need to know the names and who would be interested and which test. Right? So we did all that information, submitted it, right? Um so we have that, all that information. And I suspect what will happen is is that this was six months ago and somebody won't be available, so. So there may be some extra money, you know what I mean? Um, so uh it's it's not an inexpensive, they're not inexpensive tests. Um so there's, we can't. There's not enough money there to 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 test everybody. Not everybody signed up anyway, right? So there may be some uh folks that that are signed up originally, where I'm going with this is folks that signed up originally. Um that may not be able to make it or maybe have had just had the test elsewhere or something and don't need the test anymore. Um then we would free that money up for anybody else in in the county uh to want to, to want to. To to jump onto those tests in the public safety route. So otherwise, it's already preordained. Who's gonna, who's gonna do the test?
And ultimately, you have no problem administering the funds.
Right? No, well, I don't, I I I I'm I'm being presumptuous. I called Michelle yesterday.
We would do it through finance.
We'll be doing it through funds, not into the sheriff's budget and then paying out that way.
No, it would run through a different fund.
Just such that, so and then we would still approve the payouts. That.
Yeah, it would go through our check warrant.
Yeah, okay.
Uh and communications is included in that. Any public safety folks, thank, thank you. And I, and shame on Michelle for not answering her phone yesterday when I said, I was gonna, I'm gonna go ask if it's okay if we do this. I'm gonna dump this on your plate. I'm sure she'd have been fine. I don't mean to be presumptuous, but I will certainly talk with her, but I don't anticipate any issue.
I was actually interested in applying as the county entity on behalf of everybody. So the fact that Chief Warlock took this on was. Beneficial to us, so.
It sounds like it'll be beneficial to all the participants as well, and if they need. Some entity to administrate it, then.
This isn't a heavy lift for us to do.
Yeah.
I do need your authori- I would need your authorization to sign now, to sign the acceptance if that's uh if that's your pleasure.
Move to grant the sheriff authority to sign.
Seconded.
Move seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Thank you very much. That's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you.
I'll get the copy of that.
Could you give the jail count to Wendy? This cross off.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
No, don't be shy. You know I won't bite.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um so I'm here in regards to the Community Resilience Partnership Service Provider Grant. Um so this is the fourth time now that I'm coming to talk about this grant. Um. So you might be a bit familiar with it, but as a bit of a refresher, this is a grant program from the state that um. Allows for us to assist towns with enrolling into the state's Community Resilience Partnership. Which assists towns with preparing for the impacts of climate change and reducing their um energy um impacts. Um, so like I said, this is the fourth time that we're coming for this grant. Um we've assisted the towns of Alman and Demoscada in one round. The towns of Bristol and Newcastle in the second round, and we're currently assisting the towns of Edgecombe and Whitefield um in this current round. And this is for, like I said, enrolling in the partnership and then applying for grant funding for the towns to work on climate resilience projects. Um so what we're here for today is the current grant round is going to be due on August first. And we're working to find two more towns to apply for to assist with enrolling. Um. So we're going to be asking for your permission to apply for this grant, um as we are working to find these two towns by August first. And then also to authorize Carrie to sign the application on um behalf of the county. Once we submit the application, if we find the two towns um by August first.
Are now, uh the, you mentioned some of the towns. Uh the other towns in eventually be included?
Um, yeah, so uh those are the towns that we've assisted with enrolling so far. There are other uh service providers throughout the county that have assisted other towns with enrolling. So Wiscassit has enrolled, Booth Bay, Booth Bay Harbor are already enrolled, Waldaborough has enrolled with their town planner.
Who are we missing?
We are currently missing Bremen, Dresden. Whitefield, Somerville, or well, we're working with Whitefield, um Somerville, uh South Bristol. And I Jefferson. Did I say Jefferson? Jefferson. So I believe that's it. Um so we've reached out to the six towns. Um we're meeting with Bremen on Thursday um to meet with our select board. And we've been in contact with South Bristol, um with their Emergency Management Director. And um hopefully trying to get to their select board meeting next week, um but we just haven't heard back from their select board. We've only been in contact with their Emergency Management Director, so.
So eventually, all the towns will at least be contacted.
Yeah, 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 we have reached out to them all. They are aware of this program and the benefits of it and um, you know, we're just. Continuing to chug along on um.
Okay, if you could just repeat, you're going to, what towns are this for August first?
We, like I said, so we've reached out to the six unenrolled towns throughout the county and um we don't have anyone confirmed currently. So that's why we're asking for permission, um and if we get towns um by August first, so. It's um Bremen is one of the towns that we've reached out to and South Bristol are potentially, um but we've also reached out to Dresden, Jefferson.
Southport's in, right? They've already.
Southport is already enrolled, yeah.
Okay.
And our next meeting would be after the enrollment date. So we need permission to apply if the towns do materialize.
Move to approve with the grant application for the Community Resilience Partnership and authorize our administrator to sign.
Seconded. Move and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good luck. And don't forget to mention the board on South Bristol.
Now communications.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
That's alright.
So this morning, I just wanted to formally present a conditional employment offer made to. A individual for the supervisor's posi- position at communications. I believe in executive session after the last meeting, this was something that was. Brought to you. Um, the name is Chelsea Stevens. And she comes to us with um. Experience in dispatch, in a couple of other dispatch centers. She's been a trainer. And she's very enthusiastic and. Is just very interested in joining our team and helping us to move forward to be, get closer to being fully staffed. Um, again, it's a conditional offer because our employment. Process involves a background check, which she currently is employed as a dispatcher in another center, so we're not anticipating. Any issues, but.
When would the start date be?
That will be conditional, again, on the background check because. Once I receive the signed letter from her and the full background packet, that's then handed off to our Detective Division, our C I D in the Sheriff's Department. They will perform the background check, bring that back to me with a recommendation. Whether they find anything or not, and then we'll set up a start date. Um so. Having no way of knowing what their workload is, they tend to try to prioritize assisting departments, getting. The employees in here, um but that I don't have an answer for right now.
I would anticipate in August.
Yes, I would hope so. Yes.
Because she'll need that's an opportunity to give notice to her.
Right.
Her employer.
What town is she from, living?
She lives in Wales.
And then she works at?
She works in Augusta.
Do we have a motion, please?
Move to um approve a conditional employment officer for the supervisor position to uh Chelsea Stevens.
Second.
Move and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Thank you very much.
Now, how many do you need?
Yeah.
And well, now I have one other, currently I have one other. Full time position for dispatchers available where. The five that are in training are doing exceptionally well and are approaching an anticipated sign off date. It's not set in stone, but. They, as long as they continue to proceed, then we will be looking for that one position to fill. Um, next year's budget request will be a little different, but that's where we're at right now.
And do you know ahead of time, is that a day or night um position?
The way.
Mixed.
It it's a mixed because the way that the process works for the communication center is every two months, they do shift picks on a rotating basis. It's not on seniority. And so if you are the top of the pick for January and February for March and April, you go to the bottom of the pick. And the next person is at the top of the pick. So everybody has an opportunity to be at the top and pick whatever shift that they may prefer. People tend to be creatures of habit and pick the same, so there isn't always a lot of turnover. However, sometimes when we see the biggest turnover, it's around the holidays. They want to make sure that they have that holiday off without putting in a time off request. Um and also the seasons, if they have family members who play certain sports or activities, summer versus winter. People have preferences.
So when's the last time we were up to this level of staffing?
Don't jinx me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please.
Oh, how long has the lull been? Year or two?
How long has the low been?
The lull.
The lull? Oh, God.
Several years.
We've been since at least twenty twenty. We reached an all time low at one point where we were at like forty seven percent. Um so this is, this is huge. This is huge. And we have very enthusiastic individuals. Who are doing very well, not just the new hires, but everybody is just really pulling together and. It's exciting to see us get this, to be staffed at this level. Right now, we haven't been at this level for a very, very, very long time.
And and because of that, we've been re- uh we're uh relying on overtime to cover. That or how have we made it through without full staff?
For a significant period of time, we actually had forced overtime because there was just no other way. To make it work. Um, we divided that up. We've also utilized our supervisors who are actually filling. Open shifts to avoid having to force people in. Um, so they're not, they're they're filling an actual desk shift while attempting to fulfill their supervised duties. We also, for that period of time, we had the Sheriff's Department assisting us, which was greatly appreciated and helpful. Um, we're no longer utilizing them in that capacity. We have found ways to get creative and make it through. We worked to make creative um schedules. So people could do whatever they wanted to in different ways, as long as the shifts were scheduled or filled. Um, we allowed a lot of that flexibility.
We also have a couple of reserve dispatchers, so they don't have positions assigned to them. They're able to work shifts. When they're available.
And we'll still have that for filling purposes later.
Yes, definitely. We have a a minimum number of shifts that we request them to work a month. And they are meeting in one of them, especially far exceeding. That requirement. So that has been extremely helpful and has allowed people to get some of their time off because this individual is able. Or either one of them are able to come in and cover those shifts because they're still fully certified. Um, we're not currently hiring reserve people. These individuals are fully certified people who either were with us. And decided to go part time, or they were fully certified at another agency and just wanted to pick up some more time. With us, so it's just been very helpful. We didn't have to. Hire them and attempt to train them as a part timer, which is very difficult because it takes full time training for several months.
And that slows down the whole process too, right? It's just the training.
Train, yes.
Yeah, people where you can just leave them at the phone and they'll do what they can do, right?
Right, it's very, it's very time consuming because we want to make sure that we do the very best to our ability for the dispatchers so that we set them up for success. Um, it, on average, it's approximately six months, give or take. A month or two months, as long as we're seeing progress, we'll let it go beyond the six months. Um, but yeah, it takes a lot of time.
And did I tell you right? We we have like five in that process?
Right now, we have five that are doing that.
And we had five hired all at the same time.
Why?
And it was a really interesting experiment for us because they went through training together and we trained them as a. A study group instead of individuals being with an individual trainer. It's. Really sped up the process for us and really helped those new employees develop a cohesive group amongst themselves. So they now have that camaraderie with each other that they wouldn't have developed as quickly with the entire griller.
It sounds very positive then.
Yep, it's, it's coming along very well and I thank you for your support to our center. Um, I'm. I hear I have meetings and tomorrow I have um some of our meetings at the Communication Center as well. With our statewide groups and not all of the counties or dispatch centers can say that their. Their board supports them, and so I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well, you provide a big service, you know, to. Well, you provide a big service, you know, to.
We're all a team and we're a piece of the puzzle and without everybody working together, it just doesn't work. We couldn't do our job without the appropriate responders doing theirs either.
Why not? Seriously. You know, for, for not supporting it, I, I don't, I, there's no explanation.
Agreed. Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the.
And have a great day.
Thanks, you too.
So our district attorney's office has had an employee submit a resignation. Our office supervisor slash paralegal position has been filled for many years by Amanda Charlton. Mandy's been with us for um a long time. She's held every position within the district attorney's office and the support staff. And she's decided that she is going to move along in her career and go to our neighboring county and take a position in their DA's office. And um the poignant part of that story is that Mandy's father used to work in the DA's office in Sagrada County. So it, it feels like home to her because of uh the connection her dad had with the staff there. So she's looking forward to this change. Her last day will be Thursday, this Thursday, July seventeenth. And I shared this information with the DA and um she has expressed an interest to post the position, the vacancy both inside and outside at the same time. So I told her that to you for.
Well, we need to uh, to rec- to uh re- uh recognize the resignation. Motion to do that.
Move to accept and recognize the resignation with regret and with wishes for good luck.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor? Aye, three to zero in favor. And will the position to be posted just for paralegal or what level? Is it, it sounds like um she's been around for a long time, so she was higher level, but.
So we've, we've had different variations of the office supervisor position. At one point it was a paralegal and a supervisor separate. And we had one legal secretary at that point. We've recently, in the last couple of years, combined the supervisor duties with the paralegal duties and then created a second legal secretary. And we shifted some of the office duties in that manner. Um, there are currently two employees in the legal secretary positions. And we have two victim witness advocates also, so I don't really have a whole lot of flexibility within the budget to split them into two separate positions. We only have five budget, five positions budgeted.
So you're going to hire a person then to do?
That's all we have funding to do, yes.
But if we hire from within, that's going to open up another position that needs to be filled. Is that correct?
It would, yes.
I know just the market's tight for legal staff.
I actually had somebody call yesterday interested, so.
Would you like, you need a motion now?
To post the position.
Move to post the position.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
We are hiring.
And that was to post inside and out.
Okay, the next item I have is a purchase authorization for a door replacement at the planning office. In the lower level, we've got a door that needs to be reconfigured and um meet the requirements that we need to use that building as an alternative emergency operation center. So if we have a, a disaster that we're responding to, normally the E O C would be activated in the courthouse. But if the emergency is in the courthouse or near the courthouse and we need to go off-site, the planning office is our our secondary uh location. And a few years back, we had some homeland security grants, funds allocated towards doing retrofitting to the planning office. One of the things was we added a, a automatic generator that's in place and functioning. Um, we added security cameras, those are in place also. So this last piece of the, the upgrades to that building is the replacement of doors. And then the next piece of that door replacement is to add swipe cards or digital access to the doors.
So they're all exterior doors?
So this is, this is just one door.
This one door.
One door. So we uh we do have grant funding to pay for this in full.
So the motion should be for the? To, for the authorize the purchase of the replacement door.
At five thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor? Three to zero.
And then the next item is a contract renewal with our Pitney Bowes postage meter. I am, I don't know if you're familiar with postage meters, but you're not allowed to purchase them and own them as an entity because they have a legal currency within them. So the, the postal service does updates to the uh balance of our postage available. And we pay for that online. We rent the postage meters through Pitney Bowes. And we have a five-year contract in place currently. It's not due to expire until February. But I talked to the Pitney Bowes representative that we have and she gave us an offer to get a replacement postage meter, change some of the features that we have on it. Renew the five-year contract and the price would go down. Because we had features on the old machine that we don't really use very often, so we can get the new meter without those functions. And the, they cost instead of was one hundred five dollars a month, it goes down to eighty-seven dollars a month. And that's for a five-year term. And it would start immediately instead of waiting for the, the former contract to expire.
We have a motion.
Move to approve the contract renewal for Pitney Bowes.
Second, for those prices, all in favor? Three to zero in favor.
Signatures.
So at the last meeting, we received an update on the outstanding restitution. I've not heard anything else since that meeting.
Give it another meeting or two and then call them back and then say, you know, what's up if we don't hear between them, so. It sounded like it was close to resolution, but.
It did. They were supposed to have a plea hearing on Friday.
I would like to table the L C T V proposal indefinitely.
Does that mean uh if it's tabled indefinitely, we remove it from old business?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Move to table indefinitely.
Can you?
L C T V.
Discussion and then just why um take it off totally now?
Discussion, I don't think we plan on funding it and we can take it off old business.
Uh, I would just be curious if like they've been moving to discuss with the towns to opt in. If they've been working with the towns to opt in, I would want to keep it there, but if they haven't been working.
Good question, I don't.
If the towns, then I would take it off. For apparent lack of interest.
And I don't know the answers.
But if we don't know the answer, then.
Would you like me to reach out to Larry?
Yeah, if you, for me, it would be helpful to know that. Okay, so we just table right now.
There was no second, or no, there was a second. From David.
So the motion is on the table?
Yeah.
That you made?
Yes.
And you seconded. So, you know, the table, we want to vote this down. All in favor? Opposed? Aye.
So we're going to keep it on.
Just.
Carrie is going to contact.
Maybe it'd be a better motion after we hear this.
I'll leave it on for now and follow up with Larry. The public safety building, I reached out to the consultants yesterday with the updated list of properties. There's been two additions to the list. Uh, I had a property owner in Dammer Scott. I, I had the conversation with the property owner and um we've added that property to the list for consideration. And there's also two properties side by side in Dammer Scott, a Noble Borough right on the, the town line that recently came on the market that we've added that also. Uh, I've sent them all to the planning commission to do mapping on just yesterday, so they've started that process. I'm hoping that we can do sidewalks in the next week or two.
Okay, so this is right now, just some information for us. And I've seen another sign pop up on Route one by one of the other properties or maybe across the road, but are you aware when they come up or? Or I, I don't know.
A lot of eyes.
That's on their list, yeah. So maybe.
Did a search yesterday and I, I didn't see anything else that was large enough.
Okay.
That was in the, you know, geographic range.
And what is the timetable once the consultant sort of look at those properties? Or when are they going to get out to start walking them or?
I offered six different dates to them yesterday and we're back.
I know some of us.
Would like to start negotiating this purchase.
Right, and we still want to be able to hit those grants when the rounds come around.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, thank you for your continued work on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, the next item is the tax abatement hearing is still on for August fifth. And then we have one at eleven o'clock today that I confirmed with both parties that they land on attendance.
And Attorney Silk has um confirmed for sure.
And August fifth is at eleven AM?
Eleven AM. Will be down in the multipurpose.
Not that, we'll be missing.
So do you want to give updates from your?
L C R P C Executive Committee meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. Nothing on Coastal County's workforce. David on M C C A.
M C C A had a great meeting in uh.
We missed you, Bill.
Yes. And he jumped right over you, didn't he? In Franklin County, uh it was great to see Evan there and we did miss you, Bill. Uh, it was a good meeting, a lot of sheriffs around there for, for sure. Um, so there was uh some collaboration there. We had the administrators there, sheriffs there. Um, I don't remember seeing anybody from registry or probate that, or their association there. Um, but I know that Andre, the uh current president of the M C C A um is big into collaboration and that makes a lot of sense. And it was sort of um revealed there that the sheriffs were happy with the way um M C C A is working with their associations, particularly on legislation. Um, that still needs to be pursued, uh but at least through the last session, working together um to uh present positions or at least knowing how of not blindsided by positions of each side of each group, sorry. Uh, the risk pool meant nothing really new there, more claims that come in, but still mostly of their claims due to animals and vehicles. Some bigger ones more um for civil rights of allegations, but um those are processing uh through this system or, and I'll give you more information later as they go through on that. Uh, it's a risk pool. Uh, it ended with a small reception at a um restaurant up the road from their um emergency management building and uh it was a good way to conclude the day, like a whole day of meetings um for um the M C C A. You know, and, and Franklin County, so.
And the really beneficial thing that happened at that meeting that we haven't seen in the past is M M A attended. Their president, their executive director and their advocacy chair or lead. Forget what her title is. Uh, they were all there in attendance at the meeting. That was.
That was a first.
That was the first I've seen that much involvement from M M A. I hope this is a signal that we're going to really start working together.
Hopefully it wasn't just the free meal.
It's a good meal.
Well, I think uh our new chair is uh working at for that sort of thing.
We can hope.
I think that we'll all be stronger if we work together instead of working.
Actually, we should be because of our interests are all common. And that will remind me to remind you guys that of the convention in September with that theme that uh Carrie hit it.
I wasn't making it. I wasn't picking a blog on us.
Uh, it did remind me that we should plug it since we're local, we should make a, you know, a good appearance there, so if you can make it. I know I'll be, I'll, I put it on my calendar, so. That would, that is uh September.
Eighteen, nineteen.
Eighteen.
Is the.
Nineteen.
That's why.
Nineteen and two.
Eighteen, nineteen.
It starts Wednesday with a golf tournament and, and Saturday Monday.
I'll let you putt for me.
There you go. Well, it's not, not my thing, but uh I'm sure the sheriff may get into it.
Yep, that's likely.
That's all I had for a big.
Good.
So. So we, do we just adjourn for an hour and then?
Do you want to? Take a break until eleven and reconvene for the tax abatement?
Move to recess at nine fifty to reconvene at eleven AM for our tax hearing.
I don't have anything for executive session.
Okay.
Lovely.
I second that. All in favor? Three to zero in favor.